It's raining on one time. Do it.
This is what I was. This is what we're getting with the last, last two weeks. And you can't get away from it.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this special call meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. We officially call this meeting to order. This is a, as I mentioned, a special call meeting tonight. Our agenda has to do specifically for the workforce development realignment proposals that have been sent forth by the state. This has been an ongoing process for coming close to a year now. I think one of my first memos was back maybe last November. So it's been a process. We've received mountains of information. I think from my perspective, I sit down for the first day, and I can't remember when, I didn't have any other meetings today, and I've read a lot of materials, getting ready, and brought back lots of memories and discussions that we've had over the past 11 months. This is another one of those situations that Randolph County didn't ask for. We didn't go out seeking that. The good news is, we have had lots of professionals in this county that have been involved over the years in workforce development and have been a great resource in this process. Some of the discussions and issues that I'm sure we will hear tonight, we've been a part of a consortium, Regional Consolidated Services, for a long time, I think, late 70s. And this workforce development realignment proposal was not mandated, but was left to individual boards of commissioners. And our four other partners in this process have all gone, have taken different directions in dealing with the workforce development realignment. They have voted to realign themselves to, I think, four different directions, actually. None of the, none of the other four went, went together. They all went to other regional development boards around the state. So with that, we'll get started tonight. We do have an agenda. We will call on our longtime workforce development operations. Crystal Parks is here tonight. Then we're going to hear a presentation from Wendy Walker Fox with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council. And then we will hear from Randolph Community College and interim president, Albert Lassiter, is with us tonight for that process. So we thank you. I do want to, and maybe Wendy was going to do that, but Trent Cockerham is here tonight. I saw come in. So you think probably know that Randolph Hospice and Triad Hospice merged, and Trent is the CEO of the new Piedmont Triad Hospice Organization. Something you might not know is Trent served for a number of years as president of the Piedmont Triad Regional Council Workforce Development Board. And with Yachting County, Trent, was that correct, I think?
Yachting and then Forsyth.
Yes, yep. So he brings a lot of history with this process, and I'd be remiss not to. And Wendy, you certainly can go take care of it. I think that we should recognize Trent, since he also looks after our hospice program here in Ashburn now. So I'm going to just give a few, maybe try to give a sort of little outline and break down these 11 months into about four little processes along the way, so everyone understands. And before I do that, and I have asked that if it's okay to release a copy of this to, to others, but our Economic Development Corporation, several months ago, commissioned a, a process to, which intended to be a guideline or a footprint for a capital campaign here in Randolph County, to provide some funds that could be used for securing other properties, so that's not always left to the county to do, and maybe do some things that the county, through governmental regulations, et cetera, is not able to do. But this report has five initiatives in it. The fifth one, of course, is a fundraising and investor relations. So, but the fourth one is a talent and workforce development initiative. And I wanted to read, because they interviewed, I think, it was either 63 or 65 Randolph County business persons, from all segments of our economy, a variety of businesses. You would immediately recognize most of the people's names, if not all of them, that are on this list. We don't know who said what, but we have some of the comments that they made in that process. And I wanted to just read two, two comments that was made to sort of help, I think, add some significance or importance to this process. They both have to do with the talent and workforce development. And we don't know who, as I said, we don't know who said them, but their interview comments, there's seven specific quotations who spoke or who made comments in their interviews. And one of them said this, and I, it's an indication, I think, that more that the public is maybe not aware of all that does go on in this county. But the comment is this, "There is not a senior entity that is doing workforce development for our county. While there are a handful trying to address this, all these separate entities need to pull together and work together." That is certainly true in that, in that second sentence there, of trying to work together in this process. The next one, I would, it is a compliment of Randolph Community College and our high schools. "I was really impressed by the partnerships in place and how well our education institutions are adapting to equip our kids for the trades in manufacturing." The summary of this initiative says this, and like I said, it is, it is the, it is the fourth of five, and the fifth one totally dealt with whether or not to have a campaign, basically. So of the four, "There is no other subject that the interview sample so strongly agreed on than with the need for workforce development to be addressed." So to that extent, and forget what the state has done, we're going to go this in what we can and can't do, should or shouldn't do for the future of Randolph County. And I have to say also, it is not, it is not a reflection on anything that Regional Consolidated Services, they're called in the middle on this. And again, the other four counties made their own decisions and decided to go in different directions, and we're the, we're the last man standing in this process. So I just make that comment also to go forward. So here is a memo from February the 18th of '22, and it refers to a meeting back on November the 10th, 2021, at the NC Works Commission Quarterly Business Meeting. And the chairman of that meeting, Tom Rayman, was the Ford of Governor Roy Cooper, requested that the Governance and System Alignment Committee, that is, conduct a study to understand the opportunities to realign the workforce system, specifically the arrangement of our local workforce development boards, quote, "to better support economic development in the state." Memo, then a little further, also goes on to mention, "Federal and state law acknowledges the regional alignment of workforce and economic development." The state, the state law encourages Department of Commerce, home of the Division of Workforce Solutions, which administers the state's programs and the WEOWA program, to align its activities with the prosperity zones. So that was another issue that came out to, in preparation or in requesting and developing a program for realignment of the workforce boards. This is the one that first mentioned the eight guiding principles that were to be used to, to evaluate the realignment. April the 8th, there was a letter from Governor Cooper to all elected officials in North Carolina. He refers to the March 30th event, when the commission voted to approve recommendations to realign the existing service areas of local workforce boards. "I, being the governor, strongly endorse this action. And I ask that you reexamine your current workforce board alignment and encourage you to seriously consider whether your alignment can be improved to best reflect the principles outlined by these recommendations and the needs of your communities, businesses, and job seekers." So then there was, and I think each commissioner has a copy of those eight guiding principles that you're placed tonight. And then there was the issue, this came from the Department of Commerce, to set August the 1st, 2022, as the deadline for notifying Commerce of our intentions for our realigning this, our workforce development process. Obviously, we did not make that deadline. Neither did a lot of other counties, certainly in our area didn't. But, and we are, of course, obviously, the last in our development area to make a decision. Some of that was brought on by what others might do and where that would lead us. So we didn't make it, but several others did likewise. The intent of the realignment is to make our workforce development boards more in line again with those prosperity zones. As I mentioned at the start tonight, we have been with Regional Consolidated Services, as Janice Scarborough was instrumental in getting that program started. That was back when Russell Walker was in the General State Senate. And this workforce, we, this Regional Consolidated Services Board came online in 1979. So they have guided our workforce efforts for 43 years. Orange County went with Research Triangle. Moore County went to the southeast with a group that goes toward Fayetteville, the Fayetteville area workforce board down there. That's sort of, one of their commissioners said that's sort of where their development is going. The expansion of Highway 21 carries on. Montgomery County went with a new regional board, Mid-Carolina, and Alamance County went with Piedmont Triad Regional Council, who's with us tonight. Just as a note, Davidson County, which for years has operated as a single county program, they too, earlier this year, joined Piedmont Triad Regional Council. Guilford is the only one I know of in our immediate area that continues and will continue to operate as a single county program. So I just make some of those comments to sort of get an idea of where we're headed tonight, or why we're here, why we're going through this process, and what is expected to be our, our final outcome in this process. So with that, any commissioner have anything you want to say before we get started with this? All right. Our first is our current Workforce Development Operations Director, Crystal Parks. Crystal?
Good evening, Chairman Frye, commissioners, and county staff. It's been 11 months, 11 months since we learned about the realignment, and that it would be a priority for our governor and the NC Works Commission. I want to say that I do appreciate the opportunity to address you. I appreciate the individual time and effort that you've put into this over the following months, or previous months. I kind of wanted to address that five counties, three prosperity zones. Originally, we had two workforce boards. One was the PD region, and then there was the regional partnership. At some point, many, many years ago, Richmond County decided that they were going to go with another workforce board, which was kind of a surprise to us. And rather than have two, which is two counties, we decided to merge them all. And we do touch in some way, somehow, but that was why we came, became such a distorted workforce board. And although our, our position has changed, as most of you know, I've been very much communicating with all five of you, I did decide to leave the previous presentation information, because I did not get the opportunity to present it then, even though I was talking to you. It's good information. It's valid information, so I decided to leave it. I do want to at least mention, I don't think I'd be serving my staff right or appropriately if I didn't say, I think that we are the only administrative entity who has come out of this with no funding at all. I do believe most have kept some type of funding in the realignment process. Something feels odd about that, but we're going to leave that there. I want to say publicly, real quick, that I am very proud of the workforce staff I have. I am very proud of the way they have conducted themselves. It's been stressful, and they have continued to work hard. I sincerely appreciate their commitment. Thank you. However, in the end, no matter how hard we worked, it was not going to really control any piece of this. Everyone here knows, I am very passionate about all programs RCS operates. And let's, I'll be honest, we all know, I don't give up easy. So I appreciate the time and the effort that you've put into hearing all of my options, all of my thoughts, in trying to stay in the workforce business. So I still stand by my original position. I needed two counties to stay to make it work financially. Since that's not going to happen, I want to say that I encourage you to go with PTRC, as there are perks to being a part of a multi-county workforce board. With the change in our circumstances, and please hear me clear, we do not want to be out of the workforce business altogether. There is a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done in the coming months for Toyota alone. I want to assure you that RCS remains committed to assisting you, Randolph County Board of Commissioners, Albert Lassiter and his team at Randolph Community College, Kevin Franklin and his team over at Economic Development, and any other entity that we can help or assist. We want to do that, because we believe in the work we do, and we believe in the people we do it for. We want to be a part of making Randolph County a place where families can live, grow, and prosper for a lifetime. Now, I reviewed the presentation information that was provided by PTRC, and I just want to convey to you all that RCS and Regional Partnership has very similar funding streams. The WEOWA funds, the National Dislocated Workers affected by COVID funds, the Finish Line Grants, and the state legislative funds through the Eastern Triad Workforce Initiative, as well as Carolina Cross 100. Golden Leaf and Appalachian are two that we didn't apply for. I'm also proud to say that we too had an application that was approved to participate in the first ever cohort for the II Workforce Leadership Initiative. So congratulations to Tammy. I'm a Randolph County born and bred citizen. My interest also lies within my county. So I do want to go ahead and just throw a few thoughts out there. Of course, my door's always open. You know that. This is going to take some effort on your part. I realize that. But I've said it over and over and over, the devil's in the details. I do believe that this was nothing more than a political power play. I am very concerned about our rural areas continuing to get served. So I would ask you to please be aware of your state allocation for the county versus the administrative entity allocation that you're allotted. If performance falls off, it would be justified to cut funding. However, Randolph County has been a star performer, and we, as a county, are going to need sufficient funds to handle the work that's needed for the mega site. I would also like to ask you to advocate to your new administrative entity to keep our local career center open. That can be costly. I think we get a great deal on our rent where we are, and they may choose not to keep it there, but somewhere, somewhere for the citizens to go and get the services that they need. We have been in business, in the workforce business, since our agency's creation on April 4th, 1979. Our staff and our subrecipient staff have an amazing amount of knowledge about our county, about our workforce, and about our employers. I would ask that you also advocate for their continued employment for a certain period of time. Give it a good transition period, maybe 90 days at a minimum. But you're going to have to do that. I can't. Again, I appreciate all the information that's been shared up to this point. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you. I've given you a lot of information over the past few months, and I appreciate every one of you reading all eight pages sometimes, I know. But I wanted to make sure that you were educated. I know that we are all busy, and there is no way you guys can know all that there is to know about every topic you have to make decisions on. So that, that was my goal, was just to educate you. And if nothing else, in this process, we've learned a lot, you know? So for that, we can, we can find a positive. Please, please, please know that we're always here. I plan to be here for a little while longer. We will probably have to do some adjustments to our structure, and I'm continuing to seek additional funding. So, you know, I'm not ready to say exactly what that's going to be yet. However, we do want to be involved in workforce in any way that we possibly can. So I would hope that you would remember that. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Crystal, you'll still be doing the Head Start?
Yes.
And the senior?
The agency will be doing Head Start. I don't know that I won't be there, but...
Those programs continue to go under RCS?
Yes, yes. I have no doubt that my Head Start Director, and she's probably going to kill me for saying this out loud, I have no doubt that my new Head Start Director could not run the agency in my absence. So I feel very comfortable with that. Hope you don't come to that. Still seeking funding. We'll just leave it at that for now.
Well, just keep us informed, as you have.
Mm-hmm. I will.
Don't quit doing that.
I won't.
So we know, because these are programs that are still important, and you still could be called on, workforce, whatever. That's yet to be determined.
We welcome that. We appreciate it. I also attached a performance report that just kind of gives you where, wasn't that the PY21 information? So that was just after our COVID hump. So it gives you all the workforce board's numbers, so I just wanted to...
They're in Fresno.
Yeah.
They're in Fresno.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Yes, we saw that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Okay, Piedmont Triad Workforce Development Board, Wendy Walker Fox.
Good evening, Chairman Frye, commissioners and staff. I'm Wendy Walker Fox. I'm the Executive Director of the Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board. Thank you all so much for having me here this evening. Before I start with any questions that you guys might have, I would like to introduce Dr. Jenny Harris. Jenny is the Executive Director of Business Services for NC Commerce, and I believe Jenny has a presentation. Kind of give a little background and foundation information added to Chairman's Frye information that he shared.
I would like to say, as Jenny comes forward, she had a great workshop at the regional, at the regional conference in Concord this summer, back in August. And the room was full of people, and me included, that's been in this process for a long time. We, we were well informed. And I spoke to Jenny afterwards about making a copy of that possible, and she did. And we're glad to have you in Randolph County tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I didn't know if you'd remember me from that, but it was, it was a full room by the end of that session, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
It was good. It was, just so you all know...
They didn't want to leave when it was over, either.
Didn't know Commissioner Kidd was here. So that presentation, just so you all know, that for those that weren't there, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners had me do a workshop on WIOA and workforce development overall, just to give background. And that is available. I am actually visiting other counties, if, if there's any time that you all would be interested. But as for the context of this conversation, the, there we go, the Workforce Realignment Initiative actually started back in 2015, when Governor McCrory was in, was in office, and he created the prosperity, well, his administration created the prosperity zones in 2014. Part of that general statute was included education and workforce around that, as well, as well as transportation, environmental quality, and all of the other state agencies that contribute to support economic development. And so this slide, I think you all can see that, right? The slide is the map of the prosperity zones, and then just sharing the state statute that, that was put in place. But also, the bullets are just a few of the state agencies that also have representation by prosperity zone, and all of those agencies support economic development in one way or another.
And I think our prosperity zone, prosperity zone here would include most of those counties with PTRC. Of course, Guilford stays alone, but I think most of those other counties, with the current exception of Randolph, are with PTRC now.
Correct. Guilford, Guilford Works is currently still a single county workforce board currently. And just so, to kind of look at that map, I believe it's gray. The Piedmont Triad prosperity zone, Moore and Montgomery counties that were originally a part of Regional Partnership have joined the Mid-Carolina Workforce Board. So they're both joining the same board. Orange Orange is going to Capital Area. Davidson is joining Piedmont Triad. So currently, just so you all know, this is what the workforce board system looks like. We have eight Prosperity Zones that support economic development and are, that is the economic development system for the state. And we have 22 current workforce development boards. One of the impetuses of this whole conversation is that the workforce system has to align with economic development, not only for the state but at the federal level. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which is the federal law that guides workforce development across the country, that law says that workforce and economic development should be aligned. And I have hours of conversation around that that I can share. But because those are to be aligned, that is what the governor is trying to do. That's what Governor McCrory tried to do and that's what Governor Cooper is trying to do now. So it is a bipartisan issue. It is not a political issue. It's just simply to support the employers of the state, not just those that are being recruited here, which we have a lot of that going on right now, but those that are already here that are trying to expand and grow and hire workers in the state currently. So this map you can see gets a little bit confusing. It gets a little bit hard to decipher for an employer who wants to come to North Carolina, pick any county, and they might be hiring from a 35, 45, 90 mile radius. And if you look at this map and go out 45 to 90 miles, you're in maybe five or six different colors of workforce boards. All of the workforce boards, as you all know, because you're a part of Regional Partnership, you have your own board, you have your own policies, you have your own priorities, and you have your own funding priorities. So that makes it difficult for an employer, for instance, let's just say Toyota, that's coming to Randolph County. They not only would have to work with Regional Partnership, they'd have to work with Piedmont Triad, they'd have to work with Guilford, Davidson, even Capital Area and Durham, because the workforce boards are within that hiring radius. All of those boards have different priorities and that doesn't make it easy for an employer to make decisions, to hire, to know where they can turn to for training grants, for training programs, although the community college is the best system in the state for that. But that is why we are trying to make this easier for employers. We need to serve our employers. They're the ones who create the jobs and they're the ones that are going to give the jobs to our residents.
So on Area 5, if Randolph went with Regional Council, all but Guilford would be the same color in that now?
Correct, because Davidson is on here as a separate, it's a single county. But they've, and Alamance, right, and Alamance has already decided to go. They've already sent their official letter with intent to turn, to go to Piedmont Triad, as has Davidson.
We would have the closest thing to all involved, more than any of them. Looks like-
Currently, yes.
Multicolors in most of these.
That's correct. So some of the factors around realignment, it sounds like all of you are very well informed on what realignment is. The governor asked the NC Works Commission, the State Workforce Board, to do a study back in November. It was almost a year ago. They did a five and a half month study. This was not an overnight thing that they made a decision on. It was a five and a half month study that included a lot of information. There were a lot of people that contributed information and data for this committee to make a decision. They did not make that decision until March 30th of this year. So it's been just, you know, just those few months since we've been working on, working with the counties to help them make the decision to go to a more regional approach. Some of the key factors around realignment that you should know if you don't already is that the funding doesn't change. I'll talk about that here in just a minute. There are federal mandates that designate how much funding the counties are allocated. There are federal mandates that designate how many board members, what the board makeup looks like. So those are things that we don't control at the state level. Those are things that you don't control at the local level, although you get to pick and choose who you want to be on the boards, but you would still have that ability to do that. One of the things that the committee asked for right out of the gate, well, two things. They asked for commuting pattern data and they asked for economic development data. And so my office actually shared this with the committee. I already talked about the funding. So this past year, or I guess in 2021, the funding for Randolph County, and this is just a slide to show that federally mandated, it doesn't change. The funding that you received that was allocated to Randolph County in 2021 does not change in the coming year. The only thing that affects that is the federal budget level. So as a state, we took a 5.7% budget, $5.7 million budget cut this past year, $7 million budget cut last year. We don't know what our budget cut is going to be next year, but we know that there's one coming. So the reduction in funding for each county will happen because of that, but the allocation percentage, there's a formula that they use and we use that same formula at the state level. So the way that works, just so you all know, at the federal level, the states that do better economically receive less workforce money. The counties that do better economically receive less workforce money. And that has a lot to do with the amount of economic development capital investment that happens in the state and within the counties. So this year, we got number one. You know, once again, we're in the top three of the country for states to do business, to recruit business, to grow business. And because the state is doing so well, we get less federal dollars from the Department of Labor. In other states, and just so you all, if you want to help advocate for this, in other states, the state legislature allocates funding to the workforce system. In North Carolina, we do not receive state funding. We're strictly federally funded. Any questions on the funding? So I mentioned that commuting patterns was one of the first things that the committee asked for. So we pulled all the data by Prosperity Zone and the commuting data for Randolph County actually shows that 63% of the residents travel somewhere for work outside of Randolph County. Now, we showed this within the Prosperity Zone because 30% of that, 30% of the residents are actually traveling within the Prosperity Zone, not outside of the Prosperity Zone. So it's about half and half. The same for the residents outside of Randolph County that come into the county to work. And you all will get copies of this. And if you have any questions and want further data, don't hesitate to ask. I have a data guy that can pull anything for you.
Back up to that one, please.
Did you have a particular question you wanted to ask about this one?
No.
Okay.
I would think that was probably going to change. You mentioned Toyota. You also have the CAM site down in Chatham County, so I'm assuming all these are going-
This will change in two years. It won't look anything like this in two years. So the other thing that they asked about was economic development projects. And so what we, because there are so many projects happening in Randolph County, you have some excellent economic developers with great reputations across the state, by the way. What we did was we pulled from the year 2017 to 21, that five-year timeframe, we pulled just economic development projects that received state economic incentives. Because if we looked at all of them, we'd be looking at tons and tons of data. So we looked at those that received state economic incentives. 17 projects for Randolph County alone received economic development incentives. And then we cross-referenced those for the number of those companies that received workforce services and found two. And so this gets to the, back to that point of the whole, the why of this realignment is to make sure that economic development projects, those employers that are growing or being recruited or that need any kind of workforce assistance are getting it. You already mentioned the guiding principles of the realignment, so I don't want to spend too much time on this. But I will say that of the counties that we've talked to so far, the other four in this region have made their decisions. We've looked at, we've talked to other boards. There are 11 workforce boards that are impacted. I think there are 27 total counties that will be impacted at some point because of a county within their workforce board structure that might change. 44% of them to date, not counting you guys, but 44% of them to date have made the decision to change. And so we've, and that's just since March 30th, or really April 1st, when we started talking to counties about this. So it hasn't been a difficult decision based on the fact that you do want to make sure your employers are getting the services that they need and to be better aligned with economic, to have workforce better aligned with economic development is the way that North Carolina is doing this. And I will also say because the federal law, states, you know, kind of guides that alignment of workforce and economic development, we're not the only state doing this. Other states have already gone through this process. It's painful. It's not personal. It's very, you know, it should be very professional. It should be for the betterment of the region. And there are other states that are doing this that are even behind us. You know, they've already just either started the conversation or are just now starting the conversation. So we're in a very good place to, as a model for other states. We've talked about the benefits of realignment. I don't know if for 11 months now you all have heard those things. The timeline, as you mentioned earlier, Commissioner Frye, is that they had intended to have everybody's intent letter done. I think that was very aggressive to think that that could happen because this isn't going to happen overnight. But the deadline is currently, November 10th is the next, November 9th is the next NC Works Commission meeting. They are going to have the letters of intent from the counties that have already expressed their interest in changing boards. And just so you all know too, a county can change their workforce board at any time. This is not just a one-time thing. It can happen at any time that a county decides, maybe this is what we should do. This specific initiative is designed to align it with the economic development system in the state. Any questions?
Questions, Commissioners? Anybody? All right.
All right. Thank you.
Wendy?
So I don't have a presentation prepared. I think we sent ahead all of our information and just wanted to see if anyone had any questions. I will offer, PTRC has been around for a really long time. You all have a standing relationship with us over 50 years. I think that you are aware of the work that we do. We do tend to look at projects from a very regional lens and a very strategic lens. Workforce development in particular, we do see as an economic development driver. It is not about human services or entitlement programs. It is about driving our economy and providing those services to our businesses, a high level of service. Two things that I will address, we have no intention of closing a center in any of the counties that join us. So that is not something that would happen if Randolph County were to join the Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board. We are also really big on maintaining consistency of services. So we don't want to come into a county and disrupt the services that are being provided to individuals or to businesses. So we will look at all avenues to provide opportunities to current staff. Services still have to be delivered in your county. So there will be opportunities for frontline staff and there may in fact be opportunities for board staff as well.
Wendy, talk to us a little bit about governance.
So the board, well, Dr. Harris did mention that we have federal mandates that determine how the boards have to be made up. So there are particular categories that we have to have specific representation in. The current board at PTRC is about 23 individuals. We've put together some draft numbers and we're looking at maybe taking that number up to 35 to accommodate the addition of extra counties. You all still maintain the authority in determining who sits on the workforce development board representing your county. I'll also speak a little bit about the rural county piece. In our current configuration, we have seven counties. Six of those counties are rural counties. We've looked at the population numbers and Randolph will be part of the largest four counties that we have if you all were to join us, with Forsyth being our largest, then Alamance, then Davidson, and then Randolph. So there's no way that you all would not receive any services. We also approach our allocations. We spend our dollars where there's a need. So the state and the state makes those allocations based on population, but we distribute those funds and we use those funds depending on where there is a need.
Questions? You may?
The representation, could you go over that one more time, please?
Sure. So we have specific categories that make up the workforce development board. At least 51% of the board has to be from private industry. And then the other categories are community college, community-based organizations, vocational rehabilitation, things of that nature. But those seats are appointed by the county commissioners. So we will actually determine the distribution of those seats based on population. And we can send you a draft of what we've put together that will show you exactly how many seats Randolph would have compared to the other counties.
Who serves as your lead elected official?
It's Mark Richardson out of, mm-hmm, out of Randolph County.
Just for Commissioner, Mark is chairman of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners. He's on the Sand Hills Board with Commissioner Allen and he's on the Park Board also that I'm on. I would say Dr. Shackelford helped Rockingham County pass the quarter cent sales tax.
Yeah.
And they thank me every time they see us.
Explain the fact we have about four. Go through that one more time for me.
So when we look at population, it just simply means that you all will be one of our four largest counties. And that just speaks to the fact that there's no way that you could not receive services. When you talk about whether you're a rural county or not, we look at population. So we don't look at the definition of what is a rural county and who's going to get the most services based on that definition. We look at where the need is and, you know, when we look at on paper, those population numbers, you guys fit in that top four.
And that specifically then gives us what? The fact you're in the top four?
It doesn't really give you anything other than you're in the top four, which basically means we can't ignore you. I'll say that.
Will we not get board seats based on-
Absolutely. You will get board seats, yes.
That's kind of where I think.
That kind of went over here, but we caught it and brought it back.
Yes. All right, other questions? Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank all of you for being here tonight. Next presenter is Albert Lassiter, Randolph Community College. I hope you're paying attention. I think you're supposed to talk about workforce development at the retreat this weekend, aren't you, Albert?
I was going to ask her for her information that she just presented. It'd be perfect for this weekend. You're exactly right. But appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I want to acknowledge Vice President Shelley Green for being with me here tonight from Randolph Community College. Workforce development, creating a pipeline. I've been talking about that. Dr. Shackelford and I have been talking about that for years. And it's what we've been trying to do here in Randolph County with, from the college standpoint. And here we are with Toyota, 3, 4, 5,000 people to train. Wolf speed right around, right down the street from us and we'll be involved in that training as well. I've already met with the president of Central Carolina Community College and we're working on a partnership there. And the coolest thing or the biggest thing is the business climate in Randolph County, in our state, is just robust. So I've got those two things we're thinking about for training for Randolph County. But the critical thing is how do we not lose sight of our business partners, our existing industry, who's, they're growing every day. existing industry, who's, they're growing every day. They're hiring workers, and I guess that's what keeps me up at night, right, is hiring, training those workers. I say that to say that we're at a, I think, a critical point. When I say we, Randolph Community College. We're the dog now who coughed a car, right? We've got to deliver on the training that we told the state, that we told Toyota, and that we're obligated to do for our citizens in our industry here in Randolph County. And we're at that critical point right now. I will fully support, of course, any decision that this board makes. I know you've worked on this for a long time, and I will fully support any decision that you make. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Piedmont Triad Regional Council Board for a little over three years. I've seen firsthand the level of services and the additional resources that Wendy and her team has provided for SciTech and other community colleges and other partners as well. So I've seen that firsthand. And for me, our citizens in Randolph County, we deserve that as well. And I heard her say a regional approach, and the training that, from the community college standpoint, that we're providing to Toyota and others, we're coming at it from a regional approach. The information that we just saw where people are driving out of our county, that's going to change somewhat once we start training for Toyota. But it's going to take on a regional approach and a different mindset in that. And again, I'll support any decision that you make, but I've seen those services, I've seen those resources, and I could fully support being a part of the Piedmont Triad Regional And I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Questions of Albert?
Thank you.
Thank you, Albert. Appreciate it. Good to have you all with us. Commissioners, I thought maybe we wanted to take this to November agenda, but we certainly can vote tonight. We've heard presentations. I know Crystal at the start, she is, she's sort of admitted that she can't go on with one of us. The whole workforce issue has changed dramatically, especially with Toyota and Wolf Speed for our county. So I would entertain a motion for a direction tonight, or if you want a couple of weeks to think about it, we bring it back in November. But I think it's pretty clear what our choices are right now, and I think everybody needs to know what our decisions are so that we can go forward, so that the reorganization of the consortium of counties now, I don't see any other changes coming to Piedmont, to the regional council, once Randolph makes its decision. And they've got work to do to reconfigure governance, the consortium and all that, and to get started on that process. Crystal knows where she's going. And Crystal, as I said earlier, we're still here, and you'll be a part of us, part of this county, and we thank you for that. So whatever, much pleasure, the board.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't see a reason, you know, we had talked about, you know, having some time to look at this and everything, but after all the, everything we've heard tonight, and appreciate Crystal's comments, I mean, I see no reason to belabor this until November, if that's okay with you. So, I mean, but I want to make sure everybody on the board feels good about that, if we need to discuss that. But I'll make a motion, and we can discuss it.
Make a motion.
So I'd make a motion to approve changing the local workforce development board to Piedmont Triad Regional Council Workforce Development Board and authorize you as the chairman to sign a letter of intent.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second the motion. Discussion. So it's a matter of whether you want to wait? I mean, I don't know what are the choices we have.
Mr. Chairman, that's the problem I don't like, is that we don't have a choice.
Yep.
And that may have been part of our own doing, but I really don't like not having a choice. I don't necessarily think that economic development is based on lines of prosperity zones. And I think we're going to find that out with Wolf Speed, that eastern part of Randolph County, which I represent a lot, that area, is going to be lumped in with that. So I'm glad to hear, Albert, you talking about working with Central Carolina on that, because I think that's going to be, there's going to be a lot of offshoots of that area. So I guess it's the kind of thing, we don't have a choice. I wish we did, but sometimes that's how it goes. But it's hard to vote for something when you're forced into it. And I think that's kind of where we are. Nothing against PTRC or any of the folks there. You know, work with those folks, work with the food folks on the food council and other areas. But it's just the coercion, so to speak, that we're being forced to do. Government is better served at the local level and at the lowest level, and I have concerns. There is certainly advantages of combining, but there are also advantages working at the local level. I see that on the Sand Hills Board. Certainly that works the same thing, I'm sure, with the workforce development boards, that there are things that you can do as a group, but also each of our counties are very much different. We're very much different from Forsyth County versus Alamance versus Davidson. So I hope that we can remember that as we go forward and move forward with this.
I think we do have a choice. The choice is to keep, you're right on everything you said, except we can stay as a single county.
I don't think.
I don't think that is a choice. Davidson's done it, and they realized that they couldn't keep it up. And I think also, to the community college's perspective, comments that some uniformity in training programs, this now, they will be available to every county in the region. We all, I know that they work together, but in a sense, we weren't all together, and there's other issues that that brought out in the training program. That was one of the first things that Albert had brought out early on, was as he saw some of the programs that he liked, thought that our community college could benefit from it. But as I said, it's, the motion is that we vote tonight to realign with Piedmont Triad Regional Council. So further comments or discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no. All right. Motion passes. Five to none unanimously. All right. Any other comments from this board?
I just would like to remind the Commissioners, Wednesday night, Sunset Theater at 6:00. Film Resiliency Foo Forall will be shown, and there'll be a panel discussion afterwards and by Commissioners and county staff, and certainly department heads within the county come see that.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. Thank all of you. Thank all of our citizens who might be watching from home tonight also. We have a motion?
I so moved.
Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Sometimes you take your nose and don't like it, but you hold your nose.